Good evening. I'll call the meeting to order at this time. If you will, please rise for the invocation and remain standing for the pledge of allegiance. At this time, I will ask Councilman Travis Scott to lead us into invocation.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, thank you for this evening, Lord, to come before this community to do work on behalf of those that live here, serve here, and call this home. Father, we're thankful for the land that you provide us and the beautiful weather that we're experiencing. Father, those that are sick and ill be with them, Lord, as they may not be able to attend tonight. We ask that you bless them, keep your hand on them. Father, we pray that you will help us make decisions that are informed for our community and serve us for many years to come for those people that do care in this wonderful place we live. We ask all this in Christ's name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, gentlemen, the agenda in front of you. I do have a couple of known changes. One being remove Presentation Three from the agenda. Then also to remove Public Hearing Number One. That is at the request of the applicant. Possibly move that to the October meeting. And then add Consent Agenda Item Number Eleven. Special Event Bud's Foundation Car and Bike Show. They're requesting approval to hold a bike and car show on September the 10th, 2022, from 10:00 a.m. until 3:00 p.m. at 1043 Outlet Center Drive, which I believe is the Harley-Davidson? Harley-Davidson facility? And then we need to add a closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143-318 dot 11, Section A five.
So, Mr. Mayor, the board appointments will be moved to Consent Agenda Item Number Twelve. A, B, and C.
Okay. All right, so we'll move.
I thought you'd done that already, I'm sorry.
Hmm?
I thought you'd already done that.
No, mm-mm. So maybe port-
Yeah, I'd like to move-
Move those to Consent Agenda.
Section A, B, and C to the Consent Agenda Item Number Twelve.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I thought you'd already done that.
Anything else?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move Business Item Number Four to Business Item Number One.
Okay. Anything else? All right. If not, I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
So move.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
Okay, I was just trying, I missed that first bit. Okay, thank you.
All right, we'll move now to our presentations. Our first presentation this evening is a proclamation in honor of Stephen Upton's years of service on the planning board. Is Mr. Upton here? If you don't mind, come forward, please, sir. How are you this evening?
Well, it's been a typical, it's been ordinary.
Pleasure, pleasure to see you this evening, sir. And before I read this proclamation, I did want to just say thank you very much for your, your many years of service to the town of Smithfield. Most importantly, to the planning board, most recently as the chairman of the planning board. You've always been involved in, in the community over the years and truly been an asset to the town of Smithfield. And we certainly do appreciate your service to the town of Smithfield. So-
And likewise.
If you don't mind, I will read this proclamation, sir. So this is a proclamation in honor of Stephen Upton's dedicated service to the town of Smithfield's planning board. Whereas Stephen Upton, a lifelong resident of the town of Smithfield, dedicated his time and attention by serving on the planning board for 15 years. And whereas, in addition to serving on the planning board, Stephen Upton also spent countless hours serving on the Unified Development Ordinance Subcommittee and continues to serve on the Board of Adjustment. Whereas during his tenure, Stephen Upton has served as chairman and vice chairman of the planning board. And whereas the citizens are fortunate to have had a person of such experience dedicate so many years of service to the town of Smithfield's growth and prosperity. And whereas the town council deeply appreciates the important contributions Stephen Upton has made to the town of Smithfield and its citizens. Now therefore, I, Andy Moore, Mayor of the town of Smithfield, along with the members of the town council, express our sincere appreciation to Stephen Upton for his distinguished service to the town of Smithfield. Again, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Uh, yeah, you can step right there, that's fine.
Thank you. I'd like to thank the mayor, the council, the town administrator, the attorney, and the town clerk, Ms. Parrish, who indebted many years. I'd like to thank all the department heads of the town of Smithfield, their staffs and their employees. We've crossed paths in those years, and it's been a lot to me. Just a minute. But I really want to thank, excuse me, I thought I was pretty good. But I'd like to thank the people, the citizens, who come to these meetings, voice their opinions, you hear them, and I promise you that my experience, they leave with knowledge of knowing what's going on and feel a little bit more satisfied, which is very important to these people. And I want to thank you for that and all you've done for the town of Smithfield. And Mayor, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Certainly do appreciate it. Okay, our next presentation is a proclamation declaring September the 17th through the 23rd, 2022, as Constitution Week in the town of Smithfield. So at this time, I will ask if there are any members of the Smith-Brian Chapter or the DAR to come to the front. I will present them with this proclamation. Thank you very much, ladies, for coming this evening. This is one of my, uh, one of my special times of the year to be able to present this, this document on behalf of the town of Smithfield, a document that is so cherished. And it, it gives me pride every year to, to stand here and make this proclamation for Constitution Week in, in the town of Smithfield. And again, to, to you ladies, I want to say thank you for everything that you do as an organization to help promote and to help educate the citizens, especially our younger citizens, the importance of our history and especially this document. So, so thank you very much. So if you will, I will read the following proclamation. Whereas September 17th, 2022, marks the 200th and 35th anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention. And whereas it is fitting and proper to officially recognize this magnificent document and its memorable anniversary and, and to the patriotic celebrations which will commemorate the occasion. And whereas public law 915 guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America designating, designating September the 17th through the 23rd as Constitution Week. Now therefore, I, Andy Moore, Mayor of the town of Smithfield, do hereby proclaim September the 17th through the 23rd, 2022, to be Constitution Week in the town of Smithfield, and ask our citizens to reaffirm the ideals the framers of the Constitution had in 1787 by diligently protecting the freedoms guaranteed to us through this guarding of our liberties, remembering that lost rights may never be regained. Thank you very much again.
Have a barbecue.
You certainly can.
I just wanted to invite everyone to come out and join us on the courthouse steps on Saturday, September 17th, at 3:45 in the afternoon. The Constitution was signed at approximately 4:00 p.m. on September 17th, 1787. So at 4:00, after we've had a short ceremony, we plan to ring bells and make noise to announce the commemoration of the signing of the Constitution. All are welcome. We would be delighted to see any and all of you bring your families, your children, your grandchildren, and come and join us in just a short ceremony to mark the occasion. Constitution Week was started at the behest of a lady named Gertrude Caraway, who was from New Burton. And as President, as President General of the Daughters of the American Revolution, she petitioned the Senate and President Eisenhower to begin a, an annual declaration of Constitution Week to honor this most important document in American history. Thank you very much.
Okay, our next presentation is the Appearance Commission's Annual Report. Mr. Lee?
Mr. Mayor and Town Council, thank you for the opportunity to share with you today. Before I get started, I want to give a special thanks to Mr. Lawrence Davis and his entire department for all that they do to help us. Mr. Davis is always at our meetings and in the firing range of this committee. Ms. Parrish also is there every meeting and is there to comfort us when we get a little bit heated. Mr. Stephen Winsman, Councilman David Stevens, Mr. Mayor, Town Manager Michael Scott, the entire town council, and especially Mr. Jim George. And then the Appearance Commission wouldn't work without its volunteers because it's a board of volunteers. We have two vacancies, anybody who's interested. On our, our board, we have Ms. Robin Cook, Julia Neron, Peggy Scott, Carmen Zep, Caitlin Tarni, a former member, Ms. Mary Foye-Ragstow, just left our board, and we have a new member, and I just forgot her name. It will come to me before I get finished. But again, we have two, two vacancies. I just want to quickly go over some of our accomplishments for this year. With the great look that we have with the J.B. George funds that are available to us, we were able to install 15 horn beans on Market Street, which included mulch, site prep, fertilizer. We were excited to finally come up with a particular variety of tree and get those in the ground. Then additionally, along the boat ramp, we utilized $22,000, $83 for 277 plants, 16 trees, additional bushes, mulch, and the installation. We also have coming up, we just found out actually tonight, that the boulders for this project are, are slated to potentially be in tomorrow. And that's roughly 18 to 21 large boulders that will go in to where that work has been done to help finalize that landscaping work. We also have finished the fencing along the parking lot in the boat ramp. We also have roughly $10,000 that we have set aside for our mural slash art walk projects, which we presented last year. And then we also have roughly $8,000, I'm sorry, $800 that would go towards replacing plants along the, and around the new welcome signs. Those are, have yet to be invoiced, but they are slated to be done soon. I just want to quickly go over, oh, before I forget, we do have $600 in our donated tree program. We do have plans to utilize that this year, including the plaques for the trees that have previously been installed. And then lastly, the board is really excited about this coming phase of what we're going to be working on. We, as a board, really wanted to try to hone in on, on a project and, and brand it. So we're doing something that we call 95 on 95. And by the way, how awesome would it be for there to be some, some branding to go along with that, that's "Smithfield 95 on 95"? You know, that's something that you could really run with. But for us, we're calling it 95 on 95. What can we do to bring about positive change, improvement, to exit 95 all the way into downtown historic District of Smithfield? And also feather those opportunities out to the communities right around that? And spend the next couple of years really honing in on what can we do with landscaping, signage, and, and improvements, along with all the other aspects of what we're supposed to be doing? So we call that 95 on 95. That vision is in our Appearance Commission plan, and that's what we are looking at for the next couple of years, and then we'll move to another one, like 93 on 95, we're coming in from 70, from Smith, from Clayton into, to Smithfield. It doesn't mean that we won't work on projects outside of that, but we really want to hone in so that we can capitalize on our opportunity with our volunteers to really come up with some exciting plans and work with the town of Smithfield. So that is our report for this year. We're excited about the things that we've been able to accomplish and looking forward to the year ahead. Are there any questions? Any questions for the council?
I've got one. Do you have any funds available for the sign that y'all just put on Brogdon Road, the welcome sign? Are y'all going to do anything with that one? And the one on North Brightleaf, by chance?
I'm sorry, what-
Back way signs on, on Brogdon Road and on Northside. Are we going to put anything around those, or you're just going to-
Well, with the 800 that we have that I mentioned for signage, for planning around signage, we originally said for coming in off at 95, but because of some of the underground electrical there, we're really kind of out of place with that, that we have to use those funds on one or the other side. So that will be what we're talking about on this week's meeting, about how can we use that set aside that we had for that particular sign for one of those other ones?
So I just wanted to say thank you to, to you, Mr. Lee, for, first of all, for chair in the committee, but also for the entire committee, the projects that we've seen. I was down at the River at Regatta, and I really noticed the work that had been done around the, the boat ramp and that entire area. It really, really does look good. Now, did you say 22,000? Is that because of the boulders, or?
It was the site prep. If you remember what that looked like before-
Okay.
Just to stabilize the bank, to get everything in place, to do the mulching, to pull everything that was out of there.
Right.
It, it takes a lot of work.
Yeah.
And as you know, just the cost of everything over the past couple of years has gone up.
Right.
But to do those plants, the site prep, it, it was, it was, it was, but at the same time, really, if you think about with COVID, where we've had to hold on to money and not get so many projects done, that was really the compilation of about two to three years' worth of projects that we were just able to finally get done.
Well, I mean, it really looks good. I mean, you got, we got a lot of, I mean, we got a bang, you know, as far as making an appearance. I mean, it, it really does look good in that area. In fact, Mr. Mayor, that's one within the areas that we talked about, you know, that I had mentioned several years ago, and I, I noticed it when I was down that, that weekend. So, so thank you. And then also around the, the signs, I, I was actually going to call you to mention as I was coming in off of Outlet Center Drive, the new, you know, the sign there is in some need of, some, some landscaping, right? You know, and understandably, you know, plants die and so forth, and, you know, other construction that goes on around them. But good, good to hear that we're going to focus on maybe getting those landscaped as, as they need to be, because they're such beautiful signs, and landscaping also helps make, you know, a beautiful appearance as we come into our town. So again, to your, your entire committee, please tell them on behalf of myself and the council that we certainly appreciate what you're doing and keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Now we'll move on to, I believe it's page 27 in your agenda, since the first public hearing has been removed. We will move to the street closing resolution. Consideration or in request for approval to adopt Resolution Number 707, permanently closing Circle Drive from South Brightleaf Boulevard to South Seventh Street. This time, I'll entertain a motion to open the public hearing.
So move. Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Stephen?
Sure. This is a petition from the Walter Sanders Funeral Home. The petition to close the right-of-way that basically runs between all of their properties. Over the years, they've acquired those properties. And it's a 20-foot wide, the right-of-way is 20-foot wide, the street is 20-foot wide, it's a very substandard street, and of course, it only accesses Mr. Sanders' properties. And so the only public consideration here is there is a utility running through that street, so with the closure, a public utility easement will be required, and he's provided that on a, on a draft plat to be recorded. So this map is a location of where Circle Drive is. It runs between South Brightleaf and South Seventh Street. And there is one residence on that street which is owned by Mr. Sanders, so access will need to remain for that also, a street frontage. So this is the, the plat, and it does contain that 20-foot wide easement. And so this will be recorded if the council hereby approves the resolution to close the street. And with that, I'll entertain any questions.
Okay. Any questions for Stephen at this time? Any questions from anyone in the audience wishing to speak on this matter? Okay. There are no questions, then I'll entertain a motion-
Well, actually, I had, I have one question.
Okay.
So my, my question was, you, you said aside this thing here, I want to make sure. So there is a house on that property, I mean, in that road there? You said it's owned by Mr. Sanders?
That's right.
So the question is, though, if, if in the future, though, it ends up being owned by somebody else, I mean, it's always possible, then when the road's permanently closed, they still have to have access to that house, correct? So they still have to have a right-of-way or something?
He, he will have to maintain a street frontage for that property, so through the lot configuration, that lot will have street frontage.
Okay, okay.
They have to put in a new driveway. At some point in the future, they would have the ability to do so.
Okay, all right. That's what I was wanting to know. I just didn't, I mean, I know what we got today, but you never know.
Exactly.
You know, the world keeps turning, right?
That's right.
Okay. Any, any other questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So move, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
A motion and a second. It's all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. I have a motion to approve Resolution Number 707.
So move, Mayor. Second.
Motion and a second to approve Resolution 707, permanently closing Circle Drive from South Brightleaf Boulevard to South Seventh Street. I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
All right. Now move on to our next public hearing. So this is a quasi-judicial hearing, is that correct, Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir.
So if there's anyone wishing to speak on this matter, and this is SUP 22 dash zero two, Home Two Suites, if there's anyone wishing to speak for or against this matter, if you will, please stand now and be sworn in by the clerk.
Please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you, God?
I do. All right, again, this is SUP dash 22 dash zero two, Home, Home Two Suites. The applicant is requesting a special use permit for the construction of a five-story hotel that exceeds 40 feet in height. The project considered for approval is located on a 2.26 acre tract of land within a B3 zoning district. The property is located on Town Center Place, approximately 850 feet southeast of its intersection with East Market Street, and further identified as Johnston County Tax ID number 15L110018. This time, I will entertain a motion to open the public hearing.
So move, Mr. Mayor. Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Stephen?
Thank you. So this is a special use permit request tonight because in the UDO, there's a height limit of 40 feet, and if you want to exceed that, a special use permit is required. So that is why it's before you tonight. So they are hoping to construct a hotel that is roughly 70 feet tall, consistent with Hotel Next Door. And so it is a requirement in the code for a special use permit. This is the location of the property, so it's right next to the Hampton Inn at the end of the cul-de-sac. Supposed to be a, a basically a sister hotel next door. I think it's the parent company is the same, but it's a different hotel brand. So this is within the town of Smithfield, B3 zoning district. So it's an existing lot with, within the business park subdivision. It was built, the town, the subdivision was built to town standards. All required infrastructure currently exists. The hotel will be providing all the UDO requirements of parking, landscaping, signage, dumpster screening, et cetera. There is an existing stormwater pond behind the property, which will be utilized, which is utilized for the whole development. And this is a view of the site, straight out the end of the cul-de-sac. To the right is where the existing hotel is currently located. This is the draft site plan that's currently under review. This is building elevations on the east and north side and the west and south sides. To approve a special use permit, the town council needs to approve the finding of fact, and staff has reviewed them, and this is the staff's opinion of the finding of fact for the council to review. Not going to read through them. Not going to read through them, but we find it meeting the, the finding of fact. Planning staff and the planning board recommend the town council approve the special use permit based on the finding of fact for special use. And with that, I'll entertain any questions.
Okay. Any questions for Stephen at this time? All right. And so, the applicant is here, right? Do you have anything else that you would like to present this time? Okay. You heard the, this is a quasi judicial hearing, so I have to ask these questions, right? Do you, would I be mind whoever's representing mind coming forward to the podium? If you don't mind, if you will state your name and address or just your name for the, for the, okay. And then you, you've heard the, the testimony that was presented by Mr. Winston, right? You agree with that testimony? And you don't have any, you don't have anything else further to present at this time? Okay. All right. Thank you very much. That's all I needed. All right. Is anyone in the audience wishing to speak for or against this matter? If you, if so, please come forward at this time. Okay. Not seeing any. If there are no further questions for Stephen, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Yeah, I did have just one more question for Stephen.
Okay.
You said this is consistent with the height of the hotel next door to it. What's the height of it?
Roughly, roughly similar. I mean, they're, both are under 100 feet. Both are over 60 feet tall, I know.
That's right. It's over 67 or so.
Yes. Plus or minus 67, says the applicant, for the, the adjacent hotel.
Plus or minus what?
67.
Around 67?
Approximately 67.
I didn't hear that, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Plus or minus 3 feet.
I've got one question about the drainage. I know the area prone to a lot of flooding and it says that develop want to have adequate drainage. I mean, what kind of drainage would they have?
So, there is a storm pond that was built with the development immediately behind the current hotel, which all the lots in that development utilize for stormwater. So, all the stormwater is going to be run to that pond. That pond, then its overflow goes under the, the freeway into the wetlands on the east side of I-95.
Any further questions? Not all entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
No move.
Second.
Motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right. There's no further discussion from the council. We do have the findings of fact that the planning director mentioned. We can go through those collectively or entertain a motion to approve those collectively.
I'll make a motion when we approve those collectively.
Second.
Okay. All right. So, I have a motion and a second to approve the four findings of fact. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Motion carries. All right. And what's the, the overall motion? Do I have a motion to approve the special use permit with no conditions? Or there are conditions? State them now, but I guess the recommendation from the planning staff is there, there are no conditions be placed on this special use permit? Have a motion to approve the special use permit?
I'll make a motion we approve the special use permit with no conditions.
Second.
Okay. I have a motion and a second to approve the special use permit based off the findings of fact with no additional conditions. Have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Good to see you.
Thank you.
All right. Now, we'll move on to citizens' comments. If there's anyone wishing to speak during this time, if you will, please come forward. I'll ask that you keep your comments to three minutes.
My name is Lynn Johnson. I live in Smithfield. I do some volunteer work in downtown Smithfield and I am a little bit concerned about all of this. We're going to ticket people for parking on the curbs. I'm also concerned about the fact that we have a lot of big trucks going through and they're using it as a throughway. I'm one of those who lost a side bearer to one of those trucks. And of course, they didn't leave any messages. They didn't leave a note. I've seen trucks trying to turn off of Third Street onto Market Street because one part of Third Street is no through trucks and they don't have room to do it. We need to look at the issues and this is not a criticism of DSDC. It's not an issue, a criticism of anybody. I don't mind parking being limited to two hours. That's okay. We don't have enough handicap parking to begin with, but these, I am concerned very much about the fact that these big trucks are flying through Market Street every day. I work at the Heritage Center as a volunteer and I see them coming, boom, back, rolling by. I don't know, unless you had a, the police have enough personnel to sit there all day, every day. I'm not sure you can stop it. But we need to look at a, do we need to have, do we need some no through traffic on Market Street, at least from the bridge to Brightleaf? Do we need to change so that there's no through traffic on Third Street from the post office through down to Johnson Street downtown? These are issues that I haven't seen addressed and I'm sure you guys have looked at that, at them, but I know why people park. They park, they park on the curb because they've lost a, been hit, been hit by a truck and the expense comes out of your pocket, not theirs. This is my po, came out of my pocket because insurance says that's hit and run and you have to pay your deductibles. So, that's a bad, that's a bad issue and it's going to be hurt visitors. If you're, if you've got people visiting the Heritage Center or the, I have a Gardner Museum or our new museum that's going to be opening in October for the Heritage Center or businesses downtown. Getting, getting your car hit is definitely going to discourage you from ever coming back. So, maybe we can look at this. There was a lot of, of discussion on Facebook when this was announced. I got no, as I said, I've got no problem with the two-hour limits. That's immaterial, but I would like to see that, those issues addressed. I don't think that Market Street has enough space, enough width to do two tra, two lanes each way plus parking, which means that we probably either need to talk with, be talking with this state about whether or not we can do limit through, at least limit through trucks. And I, as I'm, and I'm, I'm thinking in my head, what's going to happen when Amazon opens and how many more trucks are going to come down the road? So, that's what I'm here for. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak? All right. We'll move on now to the consent agenda. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Now, we'll move on to our business items. The first item is discussion concerning, concerning future sewer capacity. I'll turn that over to you, Mike. And then, Councilman Scott as well has some.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This item was placed on the agenda night. I had a little background on, on sewer capacity and sewer, the sewer plant as well as Smithfield's involvement in the regionalization that took place in the 1970s of our plant assisting the county and neighboring communities so that they could have sewer and sewer allocation for development as well as their existing communities. In your packet, I, I did a brief synopsis. I'm going to ask Councilman Scott if he'd be willing to go a little deeper in detail on that issue.
Yeah. Thank you, Manager. Thank you, Mayor, for the opportunity to speak a brief on this topic. I just wanted to give a little background. We started our discussion with sewer, sewer allocation and some of the things that the county's doing, that we're partnering with them and have been partnering with for many years. In an effort to make an informed decision, I felt it was important for the council to be better understand what our history is with the sewer capacity, specifically the sewer system in, in Smithfield. So, I spent quite a bit of time. I'd like to thank the clerk and the Heritage Center people for their hospitality and helping me get some of this data together. Quite a bit of data is over there. I've been through the minutes for the, this council, much of the county commissioners' minutes as well, all the way back into the late 50s. And I've prepared a very somewhat comprehensive presentation I'd like to share with the council and the public tonight. It kind of reflects this data. There's a few key points and we won't have time to go through all this, but I provided a copy for the clerk and she gave a copy and it's available if anybody liked to have one. But just a little bit of background, there's a couple of things out there that I feel like that when, when I got on the council and even before I was on the council, the understanding was is there's a, a bit of a historical discussion that Smithfield Sewer Plant was in a state of disrepair and the county took it over and fixed it and made it better. The county did take it over, but that was an agreement. And there's some data here that I want to talk about that kind of reflects that. And I, as I put on this slide, is, we, we've been a good neighbor for many years and I wanted to briefly touch on that. I, I kind of did a timeline and this is very rough, more or less to say a rough draft, but this goes back into the, the way early days of Smithfield and there's a lot of history there. And I referenced the newspaper articles, but more so, I spent a lot of time in the minutes that this meeting took place. And that's where the decisions were made. And there's quite a bit of data there that reflects this. And as we move forward with the contract that we're working with the county with now, I think it's really important that we understand where we've been so we'll know where we're going. This is just a, kind of goes back to 1911. Our town was chartered in 1777 and I'll give you a little bit of, working with some of the citizens that's helped me with this as well. We, we got to remember one thing as we look at the history of Smithfield. Years ago, the county was more rural agriculture and Smithfield was a well-established town. And a lot of the financial things that the town had established did a lot of things for, to help the county and other neighboring communities during this time. And that's kind of changed today because there's been so much horrendous growth in the county and the town is, is not seeing as much growth over the years. And as we move forward, I just want to point that out. But back in 1911, there was quite a few, you know, things that were going on, but obviously that's very early in time. I, I want to skip forward just a little bit. You know, there's some things about here, tax rate change, tax rate changes. There were some bonds in 1948. In 1959, we had our sewer plant, but I'm going to go to this next slide here, I want to show you. And this is all on record. This is in 1955, when the town of Smithfield decided they needed to improve the sewer system and they developed and built and bonded, funded a, a new sewer facility. And this was in 1955. This went before the residents of town and it was voted on. And there's quite a few pages here that reflect on that, but I'm going to skip through that, but the data's here. As you can see, as we move forward a little bit, we're going to get up into the 60s, but things change a lot in Smithfield. We had a functional sewer system as well as clean water. Our, our water plant was online and running and often when there was things that come to town, Smithfield was called on to be a good neighbor to, to help in those situations, provide utilities. In 1963, we had a water plant, a wastewater treatment plant, the one that's currently down on South Smithfield, that the county is functioning and running today. And they've done a lot of development and repaired, uh, upgrades to that facility. But this is the open house that our town hosted back then in 1963. And I actually have a copy of that and it shows the layout and a lot of things about it. But the town was very proud of this. We're going to move a little bit forward. In 19, this is just some notes from the minutes that reflect some things that was going on. I find this interesting. Smithfield did not include West Smithfield. It was a very small community and the West Smithfield had what they called the West Smithfield Sanitary District, which what we know is now is West Smithfield. And there was some things over there going on that was needed at the same time. In 1963, our hospital was already there. Very interesting fact, it really wasn't in the corporate limits. However, Smithfield was called upon to provide utilities to the hospital and our board, the Board of Commissioners here, worked with the county board and they made that happen. Just one example of many things that made Smithfield better as well as the county and the community. This is interesting fact here, the Smithfield received a telegram in 1966 that they received some grant funding. The Agriculture Commissioner at that time was Harold Cooley. He, he sent word down. Thought that was kind of exciting, but that money was, you know, used for the town's infrastructure as well. I'm going to, I'm going to kind of move forward a little bit just to save time. You know, I numbered these slides, trying to call you to it. In 19, 1966, most of y'all may remember the Silvania Plant. This was a big industry and this was a really big deal for the community. During that time, the Silvania Plant was, again, where it's at, not in the corporate limits, but they needed, they needed water. They needed sewer and the council worked with the county commissioners at the time and they made that happen at the expense to, it was a shared expense and actually, Selma was actually negotiated with on some of these projects as well. I don't want to leave them out. But as we move forward, there's a lot of data that reflects, you know, a lot of history and we could actually spend probably five hours and still miss things, but I'm going to move fast. The, I'm going to go on to page 14 here. And I find this very interesting. This is, reflects some of the, the money that was discussed back then and some of the funds. There was some more bond work that was done. At this time, we were in 1967. I believe this is one of those slides that kind of jumped out of order on me. But in 1967, there was about 1.48 million dollars and that bond was passed. And as you can see there, sanitary sewer, water treatment plant and electric light bonds. Now, understand that 1.48 was for utilities. However, the town continued to invest in their services for town. And with this, knowing this, all of this was not sewer. Please don't misunderstand me, but quite an investment at, at the time. There's a little bit more data there. It shows the actual consensus of the voting on there and how it passed. Super majority approved this. The citizens wanted this, so this is what happened. Going to move a little bit forward now. I'm going to go to page, this is where there was some discussion with Selma. Very interesting discussion. Selma's been less fortunate a town than Smithfield, but before we get too much ahead of ourselves, we were always willing to work with neighboring communities. And then this is an example of that here where they were discussing the lines out there near the pottery that we know is today and trying to make all that work. Silvania was out there and some other things. Another thing that I didn't put a lot of data here is, but I saw a lot of it, was Burlington the Mill back in that time. And again, that was a big thing for Smithfield, but it was a big thing for the county as well. So, what we're going to do, we're going to move a little bit forward here, kind of jump ahead a little bit. This is a very interesting fact. This 201, grant funding discussed for water quality improvement in regional system. What this was around in 1973, there was a lot of discussion about regionalizing sewer treatment to clean up the environment and there was quite a bit of grant money available at the time that allowed the, the towns and the communities to come together and regionalize their system, which is essentially what happened here to, to attain this funding. As we look, look through this data, there was lots of discussion and there was a wonderful firm here who was called Ragsdale Engineering. Ragsdale Engineering done a lot of work in the community. They were very active in their research and they were very supportive and, and knowledgeable and they worked with the county and other towns on many projects, not just this, but this is one of the big ones for them. But before we go to the next step of that, I want to call But before we go to the next step of that, I want to call your attention here. During this time, there had been some prior discussions about annexing and connecting West Smithfield. West Smithfield apparently had no sewer flow. They had mostly septic systems type things and there was some trouble, not only in West Smithfield, but in with the soil and the design of the systems at the time, it wasn't as effective. This is a meeting here with the council and the West Smithfield Sanitary District, which was their council, and they were seeking permission to allow the town to treat their sewer and they were fixing to take out a loan for $1.3 million to put the infrastructure in, which did later happen, but this was an agreement. They needed to know that the town could affirm that during this time. And as we move forward, Mr. Ragsdale and the others found out about, you know, this grant, brought it to the towns. And this was an opportunity, an opportunity to merge our system somewhat, regionalize it, at the same time to improve it. River, the river quality, you know, excuse me, the environment and to obtain significant federal dollars and state dollars to make this better. Our town board did a, this here shows a slide where they had a, they did a resolution supporting the project. But knowing that with this project, as you went into this, there was a lot of things going on. However, it had to be a regionalized system. So there was this later agreement that worked out with the other communities and the county. And Smithfield was identified as the lead agency. We owned the sewer plant at the time and the council felt like that was the appropriate way to handle it, which they later changed their mind. I find an interesting point, but I want to make that clear. But that's what this reflects and this was in 1974. I want to call your attention too. There's a couple newspaper headlines here. Two regional sewer system studies endorse very good data. Obviously, it's, it's on the record of the newspaper, but it does align with what was on the record for the minutes. But not only was Smithfield, Selma, Four Oaks, Pine Level, what we know as Wilson Mills now today, these areas were all coming together. This was going on in Benson as well. Irwin and Dunn were partnering with Benson for what the system they have today. Just interesting fact, and that's kind of what this touches on. Okay. Did you find something you want to talk about? Let's see. Councilman Barber pointed out to me that I should probably take a closer look at this. And I'll read it. You, just right here. "Smithfield's Mayor Bob Wallace appeared before the commissioners on Monday and asked the board to consider continuing participation in financing of the Smithfield area study, but commissioners decided to forego financial assistance to sewage disposal planning for the time being." And what that discussion, based on his, excuse me, the research that I've done, the county was hesitant to put much money on the table of this because their funds were limited too. But Smithfield did fund their part of the study. And keep in mind, we had a functional sewer plant. It was not run down and was not over capacity. I'm going to have to speed up because I don't want to waste time, but I think this is important. "Smithfield Takes Regional System Step," that's another headline, but it identifies what we just discussed. Four Oaks, Pine Level, West Smithfield Sanitary District, Selma and the Wilson Mills area. All this was ongoing. This project was moving pretty rapid during the time. And as we see on this slide here, the town agrees to the study and the Ragsdale firm, Tim Broom and Tom Moore were hired as the consultants. And that's money here, as we discussed, to pay for the study. It wasn't anything but just trying to figure out a plan. And this is called Project 201. Project 201 Study. The council began to get monthly updates from Mr. Ragsdale's firm, excuse me, from the Ragsdale firm. Mr. Broom would come before council, did I, I think I got his name right. Mr. Broom, Tim Broom, would come before council many times and give updates on what was going on. He as well was giving the county updates and the other communities, other towns. But as we move forward, you're going to see a partnership that was formed and Smithfield was initially going to be the lead and we were later decided maybe not. And I'll explain that a little bit from what I've found. This next slide here is, talks about long-range sewer improvement. Again, during this same time frame, I thought this was important. The Herald done a great job of documenting these things. They discussed the funding, how it was laid out, but this identified that Dunn, Irwin and Benson were working together as well as Smithfield at the same time. Same pot of money looking at to get the grant funding. And what it boiled down to was around 75% was federal. There was a 25%. There was a 12 and a half. And it changed a little bit, but pretty much the communities would have to invest 12 and a half percent of their portion. It was agreed that they would each pay their portion of that small percentage of the 100%. And this data reflects that. There was a time when the county actually was stepped up and they helped. This is an actual document offline where Smithfield was awarded a grant to work with the study. And it was $15,000 and they provided that money to, later to do that. I'm going to, I hate to rush, but I really want to move through this. Clean water grants. There was also discussion about not only sewage, but potable water, what they call it. So again, our water plant was up and running. They were, the county needed more water. The community was growing. Along, during this timeline, Cutler was formed. Cutler is now what we know as Griffles. And again, Smithfield was a good neighbor and stepped up and helped with that project as well with the, with the utilities. I think that's important. Now, as we move forward here, this is April 28, 1975. Again, this council at the time had a meeting with the Ragsdale firm and he laid out some plans. And this right here was the initial plan and you'll later see in our current contract was dated 1979, that one of these plans were selected and that's still what we're following today. But the interesting fact, looking at this data, and it later changed, but they adopted the plan. Every plan here in some way utilized the Smithfield plant, whether it was to regionalize it or Selma done theirs or Smithfield done theirs. But all of them used our plant to be the primary heart of the system to treat the sewer. I think that's really important. And you can see there's Plan 1A, 1B, 2, 3, and then 4 and 5. And then later they had to have some other plans that kind of regionalized it. But the Ragsdale firm did a good job of getting everybody on the same page and hey, you guys need to select one. This plan here was presented to the board and our board saw it fit to be a good neighbor and to participate in this program and they later selected a plan. So we'll come back to that in just a minute because it does change a little bit. I think it's important to note, Smithfield's water plant was in operation in good condition, that should say wastewater plant, and was not at capacity or not failing. It was noted in these minutes that, because we don't know, but the project expansion may need to be done in five years if the West Smithfield Sanitary District was added. That's documented. If not, then our plant was sufficient to manage the capacity or the growth of our town at the time. Now, would there be maintenance and upkeep? Yes, and we did spend quite a bit of money. I find it very interesting, Mayor, that during this time, that Smithfield provided staffing for the wastewater treatment plant up into the early 90s. So we were always a good neighbor and managed that. In 1975, there was a joint meeting with the county commissioners along with the other towns and they were talking more about selecting this firm. The record reflects the actions that were taken. There's a lot of discussion here, but as you can see, they made it, there was a couple commissioners that were absent this night, so they tabled it, but they later selected the plan and it was noted which one that they chose. And the headlines reflected the same thing. There was a public feedback salt on this sewage plan and there was some, quite a discussion there. But it seemed like the right thing to do for everybody and it made the community better. So that's what happened. These numbers here, we're not going to waste much time here because history is what it is. But if you notice over there to the right in that lower box, the town in 1975, '76 fiscal year, they budgeted for Section 7 of the two on wastewater treatment. And there's the numbers, what this cost. And you'll find some of those numbers very interesting. Again, the bills had to be paid and Smithfield continued to pay their bills as well as others during this time. 1975, we got another monthly progress report. Mr. Broom was present and he noted that there was an increase of $97,000 and that was later divided to the portions of the town that they affected. They also done some I and I improvement across the county system to stop the sewer water being contaminated with rainwater. 1975 is, this is just for the record. The commissioners of Smithfield had a resolution. The resolution was extending the grant funding for this portion of it as they acknowledged they, in January of 74, they did accept the, to participate in the program. There was very little discussion on the equity in our current plant. It was more to say, we're willing to help. We're going to be a part of this. 1975, this is September that year, there was another joint meeting. I believe this is what they're referring to. And I find these notes very interesting. Again, Selma, Pine Level, Four Oaks, West Smithfield District, our council, Ragsdale Engineering, along with the county commissioners had a meeting and they discussed this project. And there was somewhat of essential for time to make this go along. And I think it's finally interesting, our mayor Wallace and Tom Medlin, James Barber, Norman Grantham, they were all there. Hugh Towton was our acting manager, the clerk, et cetera. Mr. Bob Spence was their town attorney and Bob Spence Jr. was there as well. I don't know if he remembers that. Mayor Bob Wallace, so, and it was, he opened the meeting. There was discussion about, indicated the proposed of this meeting to discuss and select the regional wastewater facility agreement to serve the entire Selma, Smithfield-Selma 201 regional area, wastewater area. And I think it's interesting, some of the notes that were made here. You know, if you look over to the right, let me get to, I'm sorry, I got ahead of myself, guys. This over here to the right is what they're calling these districts. You'll see where it says Metropolitan Sewer District. That was one of the discussions, instead of it being called a Smithfield-Selma District, call it that and let that group, which didn't exist at the time, to manage the thing. But later the county stepped up and helped manage it. And there was a reason for that. Smithfield, the leaders, it's documented on the record, that there was some concern that the debt, if there was debt to be established and the other towns couldn't pay, that Smithfield citizens would have to pay the debt for this big project. So that was why it, the county was later, they agreed to take it on and manage it. The best I understand, it can work fine. This is some more minutes. These minutes were from the Board of Commissioners meetings, are a little bit different here, but it's documented and laid out that the groups had selected what their options were. And you can read them, but they're all pretty much are somewhat different in some ways, but it all included using our sewer plant. So on this same day, this is just a little later, there was quite a push for this. Mayor Peggy Lucas of Selma stated that Selma was desperate, as it may have, to abandon its existing wastewater plant since they were operating on a temporary permit from the State Board of Health. So Selma was very motivated to do this project. Pine Level, Four Oaks, they needed capacity as well. West Smithfield District, obviously you saw earlier, they were looking at ways to manage theirs. And Smithfield, obviously it would make it a little bit better. So all the parties agreed. The county to own and operate and control the wastewater treatment plant and all collections and interceptions and pumping facilities outside of town in West Smithfield Sanitary District, in addition to all the joint intercepts and pumping facilities lying within the town in the West Smithfield District. So what that's saying is, is you manage your pipes, we're going to take it from there. And we still do that to this day. The newspaper was very adamant and they told the story well. This is a picture here. I find it interesting that, that gentleman on the white, Bob Wallace, that was our mayor. Apparently there was an election going on during this time as well. He made the headline. But if you notice, the story here talks quite a bit about the program and how it impacted the region. And again, this was a big push to make things a lot better. With this plan, it did include expanding the current facility, which was done later and allowed for the program to continue to grow. And so the discussion as it settled with these gentlemen was, you know, the county was hesitant to take on this big burden. They made it very clear on the record that they wanted each town to pay their part and that was what was the goal. And today, things have changed quite a bit. However, the county's done a lot with the sewer system in municipalities and non-municipality areas and we still need to maintain a great partnership with them. This right here, a timeline that carries up into the 80s. Quite frankly, there was some documented problems as they went along and the groups agreed to manage them together. There was one documented case here where there was some type of event that there was a wall of one of the basins broke and it had to be repaired. And Mr. Broom and his staff worked with the communities. It thought it was going to be a big expense, but they actually were able to use some of the grant money they later got to fix it and make it better. But there was quite a bit of discussion, who's going to pay for it and that sort of thing. So I say all that to say, and I'm going to go ahead and summarize this because I don't want to, again, spend too much time on this, but as you can look through the record, I think you'll find a lot of history there for where we are today. Now, we stopped kind of around, I want to call your attention to 1977. Smithfield's fixing to celebrate 245 years as a town. During 1977, they celebrated 200 years. This is only 45 years ago. Very interesting. But as we move forward, we've got to think about the future. And as we look at the sewer data, it's obvious that we've been a good neighbor. And I want the county, which we all know, and I want to appreciate your time to look over this, I ask you to please read this data. But feel free to ask me questions before I don't have the answer. I'll speak off the facts that I do know. I try not to jump conclusions. But as we, as we move forward, the decision this council makes on the concern of the proposed capacity and the sewage expansion that the county is moving forward with, I think it's very important that we understand that perhaps this plan was not totally favorable of Smithfield. However, it's history. We've got to move forward. We've been discussing capacity fees, sewer allocation and all of these type things. My biggest concern, and I've shared it with people that talk to me about and have interest in this, is how this affects the end user. Now, I want to call your attention to one slide here. I'm going to skip through some of this. And I probably won't be able to find it, but I can summarize it for you. Page 64 on your packet there, guys. That's 1978. I'm going to see if I can get it for the people that's here tonight. There's a few data points here, right here, and they're kind of in red. This is so relevant today, I felt I needed to put that here. What this is saying is the leaders at the time were concerned that if they'd done this, it would affect the end user. In other words, sewer rates were going to go up. Utilities are going to go up. And that's exactly what happened. Unknown why, perhaps planning, but as we move forward, the county's discussing with us, we have user rates or end users, which are the people that get the sewer bill, pay every month, just like all of us. And then they have capacity fees, which is identified as what it's going to take to expand the capacity and to manage the sewer for the community, for the growth, whether it be commercial, residential subdivisions, all of these things. I think in Smithfield, we've got to really think about smart growth. But the reason I wanted to point this out to you, and I can actually summarize it for you. Commissioner Greenus asked if we had not taken on outside customers, would we be talking about raising the rates? Commissioner Bell asked if the study would raise in-town rates because if so, he thought the discussion should stop right there. And, 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 end of the day, it did, it did raise rates. But again, as we move forward, it's important for us to think about what is the capacity and how do we support the system? Pretty much what it says is, and I didn't understand it completely and I still don't, but the county staff has been phenomenal at getting data and helping us understand this. Our staff has worked diligent on this and we've got some other business to talk about as we move into this contract, as we, we know our legal team's already working on that. But this is so important. The capacity fee serves a purpose. I was probably the first one to say, well, why don't the county give us a discount? Well, the bottom line is- Well, the bottom line is, if you discount the capacity fee to any or all, the end user's going to pay up the difference. If it takes this much money to manage the system, we want it to pay for itself, we want our rates to stay as low as possible. And the only way to do that is charge the adequate capacity fee that the county's asking us to do, based on their plan. That goes along with the other communities as well, we have to all agree on that. But I want you to keep that in mind as we start talking about sewer allocation and sewer capacity. And that's an enormous amount of money. There's another misconception out there, that the capacity's going to be gone. We're not going to be able to put houses. And we've talked a little bit about this. If we have a person that say that they buy a lot, and they want to build one house or two houses, this capacity fee would not be discussed in regard to that. This is only triggered, and Mr. Cretor, correct me if I'm wrong, a state permit is issued because of the subdivision. That's when this thing, because the one and the two houses, I think ours even goes up to three, would only affect, would go if it triggers a state-level permit. So keep that in mind. My point is, is our neighbors can still build a house. You could remodel your house, you could expand it. But again, the permits and things are a little bit different, we've got to figure all that out. But this capacity fee was designed for these large subdivisions to support the system. And that's so important, that we have that discussion. As we move through this, I'm going to become quiet in just a moment, but there's some numbers here that reflect, Smithfield continued in the sewer business. We continue to provide the funding, as other communities I'm sure did as well, along with the county. And that's kind of where we've evolved to today. But at the end of the day, we want to be able to manage our sewer well, keep our rivers clean, and let our communities' smart grow. And I think having this discussion will help us understand where we're headed. If you see right here, this is one of the slides in seventy-nine, again, the contract was signed later, but the project was ongoing. This is discussion about inflation at the time. Labor's hard to get, the towns had to pay the bill, and as they continue to grow the program, and much of what we're faced with today. And that brings us to this last document, and this was signed on the November thirteenth, nineteen seventy-nine. This is our current contract that we're under with the county, and it identifies much of what I described to you tonight. So as we move forward, looking to update this document, I think, I just want to make sure that the citizens understand that we're working hard to manage these fees, to keep it as economical as we possibly can, at the same time, we have got to ask our developers to manage their portion and pay the capacity. Mayor, I'm going to ask that you guys please take time to look over this, and if we can have further discussion as we work out. I know your team with the communities, y'all have had discussions with counsel, legal counsel, to get this resolved. But I want the citizens to know what we're doing, and I want them to understand that we do care, and we're very concerned with the increase in the fees that we've seen. But this is one way we can make sure that the citizens of Smithfield don't pay for the developers for these big projects that they shouldn't have to pay for. But, but thank you, guys.
Thank you, Councilman Scott, for the, lots and lots of research that's been put into this. Mike, did you have anything you wanted to add at this time, as we just take this under advisement?
No, that's correct.
Okay. But, but again, Councilman Scott, I did want to say thank you, because you put a lot of time into this, obviously, in the discussions that we've had over the years. And I think it's important, right? We are in the midst of negotiating a new contract with the county at this time, and Bob and team have been, been working on it and so forth. And I, you know, and I think we're getting close on, on, on the revisions to that contract. But it's something that's very important, and something that I don't take lightly, right? Because I certainly don't want to sign us up for something that's going to impact us for the next twenty to thirty, forty years, right? And so, what you've stated is, is all good information as we continue this process of trying to work through this sewer allocation and capacity and new sewer plant, and the charges and the expenses as it has gone up, and so forth. And, and so, just, just know that we're continuing on that process. So, so thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Yes, sir. All right. Now we'll move on to our next business item, which is NX dash twenty-two dashes zero two. Blue Line Aviation has submitted a petition for a voluntary non-contiguous annexation of fourteen point four-three acres into the town of Smithfield, and adoption of resolution number seven zero eight, excuse me, setting the date of the public hearing for October fourth, twenty twenty-two. Stephen?
Yes, thank you. So this is the second stage of a, kind of a three-step process for annexation. If we recall, last council meeting, the clerk was, was asked to investigate the sufficiency of the application, and it being found sufficient. Now, this resolution is to set the next stage, which is to set the date for the public hearing for the annexation, which would be then the next meeting of the council. And at that time is when the council will hold the public hearing, and then decide whether or not the annexation makes sense for the town of Smithfield. So this is just a procedural resolution to set the public hearing date.
Okay. Any questions or anything for Stephen at this time? Set the, the date for October the fourth? Okay. If there are no questions or anything, I'll entertain a motion.
I made a motion, will you set the, the, next to the October fourth?
Second.
Have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Mayor, I do have a question for Mr. Winsman, related to this applicant. It's understood, and it was pointed out in the planning board, that they're being assessed a fee for their illegal parking lot. Have they settled that debt in any way with the town?
I'll defer to the town attorney.
Well, it is, it, it, they'll eventually come in front of you with a conditional use application, and it will be included in that. But have we started active litigation on their use of that parking lot? No.
Okay. Thank you.
Is that what you're asking?
All right, now we'll move on to our next business item. Consideration and request for approval to enter into a contract with KCI Associates of North Carolina to update the town's standards, details, and specification manual.
Stephen? Sure. If you recall, the last couple of years, I've been working with the planning board to update various sections of the UDO. And that process has kind of come to a stop, because the performance standards of Article ten are so closely tied with the engineering standards, and they need to work together. And the engineering standards, the booklet that we have, you know, for how things are built, is a good thirty years old, or twenty-eight years old, I forget the exact number. But, you know, they don't really reflect best management practices for engineering. They're not in alignment with our current UDO, and definitely need to be in alignment with whatever changes we make to the UDO. So about a year ago, or, we started talking about this, and the original intent was to have the town engineer work with me to update the standards, and that just kept getting pushed back, pushed back, because of time and money, time and money. You know, Bill just didn't have the resources to do it, and, or the time. So I went out and got an estimate for approximate costs of doing this, got a couple estimates, actually, and we arrived at about a thirty thousand dollar budget figure. Of course, you know how things are right now. We now have a contract in front of us. We went out for RFQs, the contract price is thirty-nine seventy, so that's nine thousand seven hundred dollars over budget, from what we originally budgeted this year for the project. So this is a request to approve the contract for the amount of thirty-nine thousand seven hundred dollars, and also a budget amendment, moving funds from the, I guess, contingency to this project. Any questions?
I have just a couple. This is, there's the UDO, and we have other manuals. This is the town's standards, details, and specifications manual.
Correct.
Is this something that's solely set up for our town?
Correct.
Similar to how the UDO, is this town-specific?
Correct. So it has all the details of how to build a street, how to build a driveway apron, how to construct sewer. As you recall, about a year and a half ago, Ted's department, or Ted, updated the sewer and water sections of that code, or that, that standard booklet. But the, the rest of them have not been updated. You know, it's, it's an engineer's booklet, need to involve engineers in the process. Ted's an engineer, focused on utilities, he was able to update his sections, but not mine. The sections that deal more with the construction, based on UDO requirements, was not updated.
But if it's, and I, I'm just not that familiar with this, obviously. If you have this, it's engineering, then aren't our water and sewer engineering problems the same as Selma's? I know the UDO's different, there's different flow capacities, but I was just wondering, is there any way that, you know, maybe people have the same, not the exact same one, but, like, to go out for a study that's going to be thirty-nine thousand dollars?
Sure.
Could we pair it with another town? And have the study done, or is it?
This is a review of what standards we need. It's kind of a review of what we have and what standards we need. Our intention is to use available engineering standards, and then adapt them to ours, you know, make some changes to fit our situation. You know, Raleigh and Cary and other cities have well-developed standards with, with CAD drawings attached. I plan on to keep this project reasonable, I plan on doing the CAD work. So they're going to be reviewing what standards really need to go in the book. I'm going to draw them up, they're going to redline them, send them back, I'm going to update them, and then we're going to compile them all in the engineering standards booklet. So this does reflect as much of a cost-saving as I can physically do.
I, I think your question is, if I heard you right, is, is, would our engineering standards for some of this, I mean, would it, would it really vary from town to town? And would it be beneficial to talk with some of the other towns as far as maybe sharing the cost of this study?
I think our standards need to be brought up. Our standards may be different than in other towns now, so to go through and redline our book to get it to current standards?
For instance, for instance, street widths, sidewalk standards, placement of utilities within that street right-of-way. Every town may have slightly different standards. We just want to make sure they work for us, the practices that Public Works uses, and Utilities uses, to make sure that we're not creating something that, you know, Cary does it, works for Cary, but it may not work for us. Raleigh does it slightly differently. We will use those standards, because they've got well-developed line drawings, and then we can just adjust them. I mean, that's basically the intent, is to tweak them, putting our own block on it, making the adjustments as needed. And not, you know, they may have like ten different road standards, maybe we only need five. So we'll take the five that we need, based on our situation, and, you know, not, not include those things we don't need. But certainly, right now, there are a lot of standards we do need that we don't have in our current booklet, and, you know, we end up kind of accepting standards that developers propose to us, but it's not a standard. It, it may vary project to project, because we don't have our own standard, and we really need to develop our own standards moving forward.
Mr. Winsman, I, I remember in the budget discussion, we talked a bit about, I believe it's the same concept. Were these people going to also update the stuff, or you can put it on the internet and stuff like that, so it's more accessible?
Yes.
Okay. That was part of this deal?
Right.
And they'll keep it up-to-date for us?
That's right.
I remember the conversation.
Once we have, once we have a set of standards that are up-to-date, it's going to be much easier to keep them up-to-date. You know, smaller changes are easier than a mass change like we're looking at right now. Twenty-eight years is a long time.
Let me, let me make a comment, too. I would say that, you know, standards are critically important. I mean, you know, if we scribble something, you can't scribble on standards, because that, that's your foundation, that you do everything available on. So I, I mean, I, I'm encouraged. I do have a question, though. You had down here approved budget amount for twenty-one, twenty-two. Was that last year's budget amount, or was that this year, and just supposed to say twenty-two, twenty-three? Because you said something about you had planned for it last year, and then something, whatever, it didn't get done. So my question was, was that thirty thousand dollars in twenty-one, twenty-two budget? Or was that in our twenty-two, twenty-three budget that we just, that we just ran now?
That's, that's probably a mistake. It's the budget we just approved. It was approved with a thirty thousand dollar figure, and right after that, we came up with the new numbers.
Okay, but so this number should be twenty-two, twenty-three, not twenty-one, twenty?
Correct.
Okay. I just want to verify that, okay?
Sorry about that.
That's okay, I'm just, because you said something about last year, you had planned it, that's why I wanted to see if we had, that number was in the budget for this year. Okay.
Okay. Any other questions?
I'm just concerned, I asked the manager with the difference in costs. Wonder what our plan was to cover that, is it out of his budget, or contingency, perhaps?
Contingency is a suggestion.
So if we vote to approve this, we also need to say where we want it to come from in the same approvals, that would be your ideal way of doing it?
There's a budget amendment. In your package that's being requested as well, for the?
Oh, yeah, 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 okay, down later, all right.
Ninety-seven hundred dollars.
Yeah, okay.
That was in consent, gentlemen.
Page one thirty-five shows you where it's going.
Okay.
Any other questions, or anything? All right, what's the pleasure of the council?
Mr. Mayor, I'm with it, we approve this with the contingency, with the money coming from where they specified to come from in the contingency.
Do you need a, specifically, for the budget amendment as well?
I think you just prove the budget amendment is on page one forty-eight.
So you need a separate, do you need a separate one, or is it just part of it? Okay. And?
I said, and, and the budget adjustment for the?
Oh, you did say, oh, I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
Yeah, I said, coming from where it's specified in here.
Okay, sorry, I'm sorry, I did not hear that, so my apologies.
Okay.
Okay. So you had a motion, and then I had a second. All right, motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, appreciate it. All right. That covers everything from our rearranged agenda, I believe. We'll move on now to council members' comments. Anyone wishing to speak at this time?
Mr. Mayor, I'm, we're working diligently on our second annual drone flying at our drone park in West Smithfield, District Four Smithfield, so we don't say we're not part of Smithfield. We, we have commitments from Duke Energy to bring their drones, from one of the world's leader in drone delivery, ZipLine, they're located in the Concorde, Kannaples area. They actually deliver medical, they're the largest supplier of medical delivery in the world. They do a lot in Asia and Africa. They're going to bring their demo unit with them. I have Cosi Aviation, which is doing a lot of their delivering, Cosi, I heard today that they're now expanded to cover a hundred thousand people in the Fayetteville area now, that they can deliver to. They're delivering coffee, and sandwiches, and soft drinks, and, I mean, and Starbucks drinks. They're delivering all that, there's an app on your phone, you can punch in and get it delivered to you through drone. They're, so they've got, they're averaging something like four thousand deliveries a month for drone delivery. They're going to be there, we'll have some students from Cleveland High School will be there, if they have, that's the only one we have in the state, in the county that has drone program right now. They're going to be there, and we're going to have some other schools doing some competitions. So that'll be all on October the eighth, Saturday, October the eighth, from ten o'clock until we're done. We're excited about that, we're hoping to have drone racing there again, so we're all working with them also. So we're, we're excited, we should be having some handouts being sent out to all our teachers across the state, hopefully by the end of this week. But exciting times.
All right. Thank you, sir. It's October the eighth, ten o'clock.
You're out.
I'll be out now.
I'll be out of the house that day.
Right in Roger's backyard, actually.
It is in his backyard. You can watch the traffic from your backyard. Just look up.
I'll be out of the house that day for sure.
Any other comments from council at this time?
Sounds like a racetrack behind me.
All right. Mr. Manager, I'll turn it over to you, sir, for your report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a few things. We also have a special event scheduled for 9/11 commemorating that event. It'll actually be on the 10th of September, on a Saturday, from 4 to 6, at our community garden on South Fifth Street, where they'll be recognizing many of the emergency personnel, not only in Smithfield, but in the county area and other municipalities as well. So if you have time on the 10th at 4 o'clock, stop in and be a part of that commemoration. Couple of things moving forward. We have the Hastings House renovations, and the amphitheater drawings, which are both grant-funded, are moving forward, progressing well. Wanted to draw the attention that our gymnasium at the Shrack is going to be closed until September 30th, so the floors can be sanded down. And pickleball lanes will also be added to the floor once it's, the lines are drawn back in. I also want, just quick, for those people who schedule out a long ways, we will be having Halloween this year on Monday, October 31st, from 5 to 8 on its normally scheduled day, normally scheduled times. And that is all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right. At this time, we do need to go into closed session. We'll have a motion to go into closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143-318, section A5.
Same move, Mr. Mayor.
A motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. We will go into closed session at this time. Thank you very much.